Okay.
Is everybody good with that?
Fine.
I don't think there's anything exciting that we're gonna talk about.
Have you rearranged your living arrangements? That's not the same background, I remember.
No, and it's a mess too, because my son, my son built my desk, like he, like my, my sixteen year old son built my entire desk, and I got one of those like L shapes with all these drawers and doors and everything, so pretty impressive. But then, the second piece hadn't come yet, so that's why all that stuff is sitting on the floor. So the other piece is over there. So he promised he was gonna build that today, so if I can get him off Call of Duty, I will have a desk, another one. But I'm not making promises that he's gonna, I think they played a trip, twelve straight hours yesterday.
My kids are just not going to sleep.
Uh, they were still awake at five thirty, so I'm not hearing anybody down there, so we're, I'm gonna assume they've finally gone to sleep. So yeah, we need some sort of parent in this house that can get these kids to go to bed. So let me know if anybody can do that. Um, okay, we're good. We have five on here. Like I said, I believe Joe is not, he may show up later, but he had a prior arrangement. So Diane, do you wanna take this? I know you're the one with the agenda. I don't really have too much. Um, she's still on mute. Diane, if you don't know, you're on mute. You are still on mute. The only other thing I will say is, I got a couple little things. Um, I don't have anywhere to be today, but if anybody has questions, they wanna go into a deep conversation. I know Monday, things can come up, but there is a football game on on Monday. Some of you guys may not care. Some of us do. Um, so let's keep Monday to an hour, if at all possible. Obviously, if we go over, we go over. This is more important than the game. Um, but if we can get something done today instead of Monday in the middle of the meeting, let's do it. But again, I get that something could come up, and it is what it is.
Okay, um, alright, so does anyone else have, uh, need to leave before ten?
I'm probably gonna do my nine o'clock thing again. I, I got off work and I work again tonight, but I'll give you guys the best hour of me I can.
Yeah, okay.
And for what it's worth, I do feel bad about that. It's just the way my schedule works at work.
Yeah, well, I guess we do that. We are, you know, you were clear about that before you signed on and we agreed, so. We, um, glad for the work you're doing, David, in a hospital setting. I know it's not always easy at all.
I, I did get my first round of the COVID vaccine on last Monday.
Oh, good.
So it's, uh, this nightmare is coming to an end bit by bit.
Bit by bit, it's gonna take, yeah, I have a couple of people in nursing home, and I know that they were gonna get theirs, uh, this, this week, and their first shot this week, so, um, they're moving, it's things, some, it's moving along a little bit anyway. Okay, so, um, you know, it's typical agenda then. Um, so the first thing we'll do is we'll look at what's gonna be on, on for, uh, Monday night, and the legislation is, uh, what we normally talk about first. Um, there were, um, two things that were tabled. Now, the one thing that's coming up is, is the sidewalk tabling, but I, uh, sidewalk, um, but I thought that we were going to talk about that in a
Correct, you are, you're still on the agenda.
Um, cause, so we were gonna talk, and, and the legislative committee, that meeting that's scheduled is, uh,
This Monday.
Okay, so we'll pick it up then, so we don't need to have it on this agenda, since we're not, uh, it was tabled at the
I'm not sure what Eric's hurry is in getting this thing passed, you know, it, it, that, he tried to cram it down our throats on last Monday. Here he is trying to do it again. We need to talk about this thing. I haven't had the time to go over. I haven't, I haven't, well, I, I saw that there was an email sent out. I haven't seen an email, you know, but there's still problems with that freaking ordinance, okay? I don't care what anybody says, that no one's taking the time to look at it, or to look at the, in the new development. So this needs to be discussed in the legislative committee, needs to be taken off the agenda.
It's tabled, so it's not something, something the council has a choice to bring up or down. It'll be on the legislative agenda if council chooses to take it off the table. It's their prerogative.
It's, it's, it is off the table. I mean, it's on the table, it's not gonna go off the table, okay? Um, yeah, I don't see the point in having it even on the agenda. Uh, since we all agreed, we were gonna wait for the legislative meeting. That's my only point here. Uh, on the, uh, resolution for the final confirmation, I, uh, Tiffany, I thought there was, uh, is this something the chief has to address? Because I thought we were giving it, going another three months.
I'm looking to see what it is. Yeah, we are giving it three months. I'm looking, hang on. That is tabled, and I don't think she
It says it's
I think, okay, so I think what we were doing on a couple of these is we were leaving a couple of them just so we could show what we have that is currently tabled in 2021. So we do not forget about these particular things when we go back, because these are the first things that are currently tabled in 2021, that we just did. So we can leave them tabled, but at least we have record, because if not, we're gonna start with twenty as you can, uh, you can't even, yeah.
Well, how about if we let that, uh, we don't put it on the agenda, but we have Mark be responsible for reminding us what's tabled during this legislative report?
That's gonna be up to you guys. We left them on there just so everybody knows what is currently on, the, the things that are gonna be currently on for the table, on, that we have, uh, very soon upcoming. So it's up to you. Becky just asked me, what do I do with these? Because she was trying to figure out whether or not we needed to renumber, whether or not we needed to redo anything, whether or not she, you know, what she needed to do with them. So we put them on the agenda just as tabled and decide what we want to do with them.
I don't think they're hurting anybody sitting on the agenda listed as tabled, and it's a good way to remind everyone that they're there and still being
That was, that was our thought, but again, it is, you know, if it's hurting, i- if people are concerned with them being on the agenda, we can remove them Monday. It is, i- it's not a big deal on my end or Becky's end. It's however you guys want to see the agenda.
I'm not, I don't have a problem with that being tabled.
Okay.
Yes, it doesn't mean we have to do anything with any of them.
Okay.
And we're not doing anything with the first one.
Just gives Mark something else to read during
Well, yeah, I, I just, if there was, if, if the, uh, it just doesn't give anyone a chance to do any research if all of a sudden it's a surprise, because people wanna take it off the table when, I, I mean, I just, okay, so, alright. Okay. So then, there's only, uh, two things, um, on the agenda. Uh, and there's a, one is, um, the new one is the military, uh, leave reading. Can you explain that, Tiffany?
Just exactly what it is. We don't have military leave in our handbook. It's something that some, um, officers have asked for, and this is, and I, I can let chief explain it a little bit more. It's, they asked me whether or not this is something that I would consider putting in there, and the answer was yes, um, because it's something that most everybody else has in their handbooks for military leave. And we do have a couple of officers that have asked for it. What's that?
Do we have any police officers in the reserve or the National Guard?
Yes, yes. So, um, again, it's just another, I, it's just another way for us to do certain things. It doesn't really cost us anything, so, um, we are continually losing officers to, we, we, as you guys know, we just hired another one that we lost to Blenheim Township, you know, we're, we're able to pay a certain amount, we're able to do certain things. Um, you know, we feel like we have something, you know, a neighborhood that's great to patrol in, it's, you know, pretty safe. Um, so it's nice to be able to, to have extra perks in our handbook for officers to make it a little more appealing. So for some people, they feel like we have everything that makes it appealing, but, you know, when, when you do lose officers and you have all this turnover, um, it's a diff, you guys know it, it's difficult. It costs us money every time that we have to put a new officer in there. So
What does this have to do with keeping officers?
Just, it's just another perk. It's, it's another, it's another thing that's just not in our handbook, because we don't offer it.
What's, uh, I don't, uh, I didn't realize that we weren't required to offer it, because normally in business, it, uh, again, I'm not, uh,
I don't, I, I would be lying.
All I know is, as, as, in business, on the business side, the private business side, I guess, uh, the non-government side, you're required to provide, uh, benefits.
Again, yeah.
The thing is, 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 I wouldn't, um, I, I, all I have to say is, uh, you know, from the, from the business side of things, I have had, uh, to, uh, cope with, um, you know, again, it was at the time, uh, I had two people who were in the, uh, national, uh, two were veterans. I don't know if any of the police officers who are, uh, in, on National Guard are veterans, but, uh, I had a couple of veterans who were also in the National Guard, and, uh, it was at a time when, uh, you know, every, every, you know, there's a big push to hire veterans, so being a small business though, but, but we did, and, uh, it ended up, uh, the, between the training camps and, and nothing turned out the way we thought. And we thought we could work with the National Guard on when they would go to their training camp, so it wouldn't interfere with special projects. None of that was true. Once they had signed up for the National Guard, they worked for the National Guard essentially, and they, uh, you know, it just, uh, for a small business, and we're a small village, um, you know, i- it can be, and it just so happened that during this time that I was managing these people was nine eleven and then the Iraq war. And I ended up with a person that, uh, you know, a person that we really needed, who was, went, she was gone for nine months, she was gone on training stuff, she was gone more than she was there. Meanwhile, we were picking up all, we were keeping all these benefits, we had to reserve her spot. Uh, we, you know, if we wanted to hire someone, she still had to have her spot when she finally came back. She had to have, you know, there's a lot of rules associated with, uh, being in the military, and of course, you can't discriminate when you're, can't discriminate when you're hiring, but, um, you know, I just wonder, just, it, you know, right now, it's been a pretty, fairly quiet time. But, um, you know, we could be in, if we have a number of people in the National Guard and there should, something come up, we could be really short of staff. And they're, and, and we're required to carry them the whole time. Um, you know, so it can be quite a hardship for, uh, a small entity. I just wanted to say that, and I, I just was, but I was surprised that we didn't have to have military leave already. I just don't under, I can't understand that being, uh, the government entity. I just don't understand it.
And it's very possible
Surprise, too.
Yeah, and it's very possible we're, I'll let, let chief explain it more, and here's, here's, it was brought to my attention. I think it's, you know, something that should be in there, um, and it'll go to, that's why it's brought up to you guys. It'll go to council. You guys can ask chief if it should be in there, you guys can do, and I, I have no problem doing more research to find out if it has to be in there, at least that way you guys will know. Um, we don't have it in there, and they're asking for it. So, or, that has been brought, so, I, you know, there's really
Is this, was this, uh, provided to you by our attorney, um, the HR person?
I'm not sure who she worked with to get it done. I believe that this is pretty much from the other ones. Our attorney is on here, if we wanna ask him, if he has any problem with it, or I can send it over to him, just to make sure he's seen it. I'm not sure if they sent it, if they talked to somebody else over there.
Well, I would
Okay, I'll forward it to you, Jesse.
I would highly recommend that we've had this, this is so specific, you know, there, there are specific rules, and they're not a, I, I real, they don't necessarily have to be covered in your personnel manual, because it's, it's the law, so, but I, I would think that we would, we want, wanna understand clearly what our financial responsibilities are, uh, to National Guard people, and, uh, this doesn't cover it all.
This is, I do know that this is the new wording, um, because we didn't have the correct wording, and they're the first time, so I know that they have worked with, they're, they have gotten the information from somewhere, because this was not the original wording that was supposed to be in there on round one, so they did round two to fix it, because I have seen numerous copies of this.
Okay. Well, I just like, uh, uh, I'm just saying that I would like to see it as signed off by our attorney.
Yeah, and it should, it should really be a statement affirming whatever the federally mandated requirements are for, uh, military, active duty military, and what is it, National Guard leave requirements. I don't know that we are, we are looking to go beyond satisfying those requirements. Is that, is that what we're trying to say here? That we are looking to do more than what is minimally required?
I don't think so. I think here's what I'm told. It's, it's, it's pretty much the standard.
Okay, then, then if we can just get, because if we don't have a confidence, this language is coming from our council. I think it's important that we have our council bless it, and then it's fine.
Yeah, this is the updated language. So the first one I had was not the updated language. The second one is the updated language, which is the one you guys have. And Jesse, I did just send that to you.
I got it. Thank you. I'll get it.
Perfect. Not that you have a chance to get any answer to me on Monday, but if you do before the meeting, that way I can at least, um, and you can see that Matt and Leah and them are all working on it, so, um, just reply to all or whatever. I don't know if you can, but just to let us know that it's good.
Will do.
Awesome.
Okay, the, um, only other legislation on there right now is the, the second reading, uh, um, the draft changes to P and C.
Yeah, and is that just, no, that, we already added the, uh, extra member, the non-voting members, so that's gonna be the, is that the, the people who are recommending to fill those spots? Is that what we're going over on that?
Uh, well, this was the, uh, second reading on the, um, Eric, do you wanna jump in on this one? I read it last night, but it's, so
Oh, I'm not, I'm sorry, I remember. This is codifying that admin can do some of the permitting, if, as long as it is
Yeah, that's right.
I'm sorry, I, I got confused on which one that was. My fault.
Okay. Alright, um, so if there are no other, okay, so, uh, moving ahead then, um, we can go with the committee reports. We have, um, the first one up on the list is Streets.
That's a different board.
Do we, do we, uh, reset the time for Mike to come?
So I sent Mike an email, and I haven't gotten a response yet. Um, he was originally, I, I was originally gonna have him come in, like, my thought was to have him come in on next Monday at like six o'clock, because at seven o'clock, we were gonna do, um, kinda like the overview of 2021 and what we, I think that was what your plan was. Um, Monday's a holiday, so I don't think Mike's gonna wanna come in on, and I, none of us realized that. So I don't wanna say that Mike doesn't wanna come in, but my, I know Mike has that day off, so I, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a holiday.
Well, it's not a holiday for a lot of people, but I get it.
Well, it is, it is for them, um, and it is for Eric, it is for any of that, so if we were bringing anybody else in, it's a holiday, so let's, I, I emailed him and asked him to give me maybe two or three dates, January, early February, um, and hopefully, obviously, January. I will get those to you guys to decide, because I would like everybody, um, just kinda like, again, our overview for the year, and then some updates on some of the projects that's going on, because I think a lot of times we get stuck in these meetings, because we have a couple of members that may not be, um, up to date on, not a couple of members, you know where I'm going with that. The, it would be nice for everybody to be in there, so maybe some of the questions can, um, get answered in that meeting. So as soon as I get his two dates, I will send it to everybody. If you guys could respond and let me know which one you guys prefer. I, I told him six PM or after, um, and anything but Monday night, just to start with. So as soon as I get those, and I would expect that I will have those Monday.
I would say the one thing maybe we could get, a little update from Jesse is where we stand on the Yasmin market. You know, I don't know, you know, Gene had been working on the, the sewer issues with the Yasmin market. If you have, are you up to speed on that yet?
No, I, I've not, I've not heard anything since.
And I think that's gonna be more of a Mike question, Tony, in my opinion, um, because we were waiting for the analysis of, we know that all the stuff was done, but he was still waiting for some of the analysis, because there were, there were still some, um, there were still some questions, because they had put in that dye or whatever, and then they never found where it went. So I know that they, that was one of the big things that I'm, I'm waiting to, that I wanna discuss in the meeting with Mike. That's like number one, just so you know. That's, I think that's more of Mike right now, because without Mike's information, I don't know that the attorney can really say, okay, here's who's at fault. So I think really, it's sitting with Mike right now.
Okay.
My opinion.
That's all I got from Streets.
Okay, and is this, was the, uh, I know there was, uh, um, some chatter, and, and certainly on Nerville Lake Road, we noticed that, uh, did, did anything come of that question about salting, where the salt was in the middle of the street only? Was that Blenheim Township, or was that just some private contractor losing their
It was actually Blenheim Township, and it was done intentionally, because they actually put, th- th- my understanding from the Facebook post, um, when he did comment, um, if you guys don't know, I, I believe he actually lives here. Well, the person that does our salting, I do believe is an actual resident and works for Blenheim Township, so, um, he had actually commented on the thread and said that that was done intentionally, because what it does is they knew, it moves the salt around throughout the day, because it wasn't supposed to, to, to go until the night. If you started on the edges, it's gonna end up like in the grass, like, I don't know. I'm, I'm just telling you, it was done intentionally, and it did what it was supposed to do.
It's a new spreading method, I think, to be tried out. Instead of spreading it all over, you put it in the middle of the road, and then the traffic
Moves it.
Spreads it out.
Right, and I think if you started edges, it goes further out, like, throughout the day. And it did, I mean, and afterwards, there were people that was like, oh, it did actually work. Um, so
I think what it's good at doing is it creates one solid ice-free lane in a two-lane road, you know? Yeah. We'll see.
Yeah, but it was my understanding that it was done intentionally.
And, and do you know, Tiffany, if, I know that it sounded like from, uh, hearing from a couple of people that, that, uh, they were still doing, um, sewer work?
Yes, there is still, um, and again, that's where Mike is gonna go over. They had a couple, um, they had a pipe that didn't correct, that, here, whatever, um, but they had to go back in and redo. There were some tops that they couldn't get off. There were other problems that they found. Um, everything was kept within budget, but there were definitely some bigger discrepancies once they got in there, um, but with that ten percent holdback, that was able to cover, cover everything, so, um, they had to cut, they have, yes, they have still been here, they have still been back working, because they have found, they had found more issues that they could get done, um, and I, I don't believe they're still done. So they are still, so for people, um, that are upset that they're still working, they're fixing our sewers. That's all I can say.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Are you kidding? So
No, no, I'm not kidding. I'm saying
I, 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 yeah, but that's, yeah, so that's an upset that n- n- nobody says you should be, you know, if someone's digging up your freight, nobody should say you should be happy about that, but, you know, on the other hand, it's necessary, so. Okay, um, then if there's nothing else on Streets, then the next thing on the list is communications, and we haven't had any, maybe we can, you know, put, talk about this more in the work session, the next work session. Um, and community, is there anything on community?
Yes, yes, I, um, I would like to plan the next meeting. Um, I would like to, um, I'd like to talk with planning and zoning. I'd like to send the Honorable Councilman Benedetti a list that I compiled, um, and I, I just thought about this today in the shower, to be honest, um, doing this. I want to, I'm gonna send him a list of the top ten or twelve village requests, um, for the twenty twenty-one year that I put up on Facebook for comments, and I'm going to, I'd like to see if we could coordinate more with planning and zoning, and I'd like to do the same with maybe, um, MPCA were applicable, um. So when is the first planning and zoning meeting, so that I can send, I'm gonna send it to Tony now, obviously, but
What, sir?
Planning and zoning is on the twentieth.
On the twentieth? Okay, well, I, let's do a community committee meeting. What day is the twentieth?
Wednesday.
I was lucky, I knew it was the twentieth.
Well, let's try it Tuesday, if we can, um, and I'd also like to get John involved and see about the pool, what we need to start with, what, um, and what we need to plan for, what went right, and what we need to adjust going into the twenty twenty-one pool season. Those things aside, um, I know that, um, one of our big goals is gonna be getting one of the lakes dredged this year, unless there's been a massive change in public and council opinion, um. Those things aside, that's, um, that's about all I have, so I'd like to schedule a meeting on the nineteenth, and I'd like to invite Mr. John um, from the pools, and it's, uh, and hopefully, you know, lay out, lay out what we're gonna do for the year.
Okay, and David, I just wanna warn you, um, if this is going to be your pool meeting, that typically takes an hour, or, and Tony, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, when we bring John in, and we can always bring John in, John, John will not mind, um, that's, within the next month, thirty to forty-five days, we have to set all of the pool fees. That is usually not a quick conversation, especially this year, now that we know we have a baby pool coming in, um, I'm, I, I think I'm just making sure you know that that's usually an hour-long conversation, or, you know, going back and forth between what we wanna do on that. Um, so I don't know if you wanna put both in the same night, or just make sure everybody has a little extra time in there.
Well, ideally, where, where do my fellow, I know, I know you'll be there, Madam Mayor, and I know Councilman Benedetti will be there as well. Um, I don't know about our third committee member, um, however, anybody else is welcome, um, to attend, I, as always, um. Tony, do you have any objections to it just being a long-haul meeting and powering through our guided, or, you know, guiding establish, or, you know, establishing what we're gonna do for twenty twenty-one?
Honestly, I think, wait, I think putting off a pool meeting a little bit further, you know, in the next
And we can do that, yeah, we can do, the only thing with the pool, um, depending on if people wanna wave readings or not, you have the three, the three readings to accept the pool fees, the three readings and the thirty days, and then we start advertising. Um, in the past, we had done, allowed people to get memberships earlier before May, which, again, you guys may not. They may just be able to buy memberships the week of the pool. That does become a little more stressful when we have people, not stressful, but, you know, when, when we don't have a bigger window, everybody shows up at the same time, and then you have Becky doing nothing but pool stuff, um, for that two or three weeks, people dropping off memberships and all that, so it doesn't matter to me when.
The last thing I wanna do is through my slash R actions or inactions, cause a bunch of other people are
I, I think my only point is you, you do need to do that one before the end of February. We have plenty of
Yeah, I think, I think it takes more than one, it's always taken more than one conversation. Have the initial conversation. Don't, don't try, don't try to fix it, solve it, fix it in the first meeting, but just get people started thinking about it. It, it would be fine.
Okay, so we'll do that. We'll invite John to the first one, and just get, set out some feelers of what he's thinking, and then circle back with a John's and pool-specific meeting within the next couple of weeks after, or as sooner if possible.
I, I think this meeting, we should, you know, talk about the pool, and then maybe talk about what, this list of, uh, improvements that you're, you know, that the residents are wanting to see happen. We can maybe
But you wanna reverse the order?
Yeah.
No, that's fine. I'll send, I'll send you, I will send you the email, or do you mean, do you mean discuss it right now, or discuss it with your planning and zoning?
Yeah, exactly, with planning.
Okay. Cool, I'll send you, I will send you, and I'll send anybody else interested, the la, or the, the list that I made, and we can do that on the, um, nineteenth. And then, in the next few weeks, we can set up a date to meet with John, unless anybody would like to do that now. And then in the next few weeks, we can set up a date to meet with John, unless anybody would like to do that now.
I think that sounds good.
David, why don't you just go ahead and send that list to all of us? I will do, that way, if nothing else, there's awareness.
Yep, yeah, sounds good. I will, I'll get that, I'll get, doing that right now. Everybody get ready, get an email.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, I monopolize so much time. You guys know about the sound of my own voice.
You're fine, okay, finance, I don't have anything new, we don't, we. I probably should talk to Kim about.
Meeting.
Meeting after, let's see, she should have at least the, the month done, December done. So. Do you want to? Tiffany, send out a. Feelers to hers to when will be the time?
Okay, I'll do it later today.
Okay, great. Next one is safety, anything new on safety, Brian?
I don't have anything new for safety at this moment, we'll probably. Go about the process of scheduling a meeting on Monday to, you know, with, with all parties on hand.
Can we check into seeing if the chief has a plan for securing the community building in case of Orion?
Sure, we can check on that.
Are we expecting something of that nature?
No, Tony was trying to make a joke.
I thought Mark would appreciate that.
I, I don't think that, I can't remember being on a council meeting with. Tony where he's made a joke.
No, I, I think, well, I, I was gonna make a joke maybe at his expense and I, I'll stop. I was gonna, I was gonna say something along the lines of, I thought most everything Tony said was a joke. So I won't say it.
Okay, I, I just wondered if, since we're under safety, if Mayor had any update on EMS. Fire chief, selling vehicles, supplies, blah, blah.
We have started selling some of the things, we will continue to do that and. I believe, I believe the EMS has been listed, I'll verify that before Monday. But yes, we have started selling some of the things, all of, everything has been. Pretty much accounted for and believe it or not, I actually know what some of the equipment is now, so. So we're, we're doing even better. So yes, we do have set, we have a few high-dollar items that. We have at least three, so meaning into the thousands. So those may be items that we do have to bring through you guys, there's not just one, there's at least three. So, and then what we can sell them for is a different story, only because I have been, I've been told. There's some sort of certificate that goes with one of them that expires this year, and then also we are at the end of the battery life for almost everything that we have. And that can be pretty costly on some of these items as well, like the heart monitor and all that kind of stuff, so.
That stuff is such, that stuff is such a scam, the way they designed that stuff to be so expensive.
Yes.
We have, we have, you know. Long story short, let's just get the money we can for the darn things.
Yeah.
Exactly, but I, but again, these are items that aren't going to sell for $100. These are, these are still the higher-ticket items that. I mean, some of these things were 15, $16,000 at purchase, so, and are five years old, so. They're still going to be in the $1,000 ranges, so now, I don't want to say thousands of dollars, but in. We're still hoping 5,000 to 10,000 on most of those things. So we think that there should be some good items in there, or we know that there is, and maybe I'll just say it, so we have Westerville that's interested in a couple of things. And we're just waiting back from them because it takes them a little bit longer of a process, you know, to get through their process, so. They are interested in some items, so really we're just kind of sitting tight, just since that, since they were one of our big supporters, you know. If there's something that we can do for them, that's something that, it's not really hurting us. The insurance is not going to drop off until we do in fact sell the truck. We do now have the title for it, we have everything that we need to sell the truck now. So we are ready to go to do that and. That's where we are. So yes, yes, and yes, and yes, we have sold a couple small items already.
I understand some of these things have a decent price, but do we really need to weigh in or we can just say?
I think what he's saying is, do we have to bring individual items to council or can we just give a blanket blessing?
I believe you guys already gave me a blanket blessing, we're gonna have to go back through there, except for the larger items, so the $50 items. You guys, and, and I don't know who all was on that conversation, but it was pretty much do what we can do with the little stuff. But I don't feel comfortable doing the big things, and when I did do the little things, I did get that clear, like. I had emailed or I had texted Rick and I just said, look, is this okay for this? And they were past employees and he, he also agreed that it was, it was a fair. Amount to, to release those items to them, so, and we have written receipts, we have all of that to go along with each, each one that we will keep together. So I am kind of going through Rick as well, just trying to get his blessing when we do certain things and, you know, again, when, when the larger items come. That's going to be something that I'll deal with, the attorney. Need to do to get those done, because if we're right at the fine line of where we need to be to get rid of it, you know, it, I'll leave it up to you guys. So, but I'll, you guys know, I'll email you, I email you all the time.
Yep.
Okay, legislation? Mark, Mark, we can hardly understand you, what are you?
It's like your microphone is covered or something.
Yeah, like you're talking.
He, yeah, he said he's going to take three minutes to reboot.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll pass on, let's come back to legislation.
I have one thing really fast for that. There will be a couple of things that come up soon, and I say a couple of things, it might just be one, I don't know. Accepting the Franklin County. Amounts for the levy that we did pass, we still have not gotten that. We were really hoping that we would have had that at the end of December. But we don't have, there's some stuff that you guys are going to see, I've been warned by Leah and Kim. And they're probably going to have to be passed rather quickly, and that's as much as I can tell you, so I, I probably should know more about exactly what that is. But I'm just remembering that, remind you guys that we're going to have some stuff that has to be done pretty quick, but we don't have it, so we can't do anything with it yet. And we'll just blame it on COVID at this point still. Because it sounds like that's pretty much what's going on.
Okay.
Don't be shocked.
Okay, so then we're through the committees and we're into administration. We have things I put that were kind of left over that were. What's that beeping? The big items. Is the Garmin Miller waiting on the railing to the back stairs, MI home sign-off is tabled. And anything else you want to?
I'm going to let Eric answer two of them, the, the stairs. If I don't get something by Monday, I'm, I'm probably going to flip my lid. They have been out, they have, they have just. Everybody's working from home, that's, that's, that's their excuse, so he did come out, he did everything. He tells me he's going to get me the drawings this week. And that's as much as I can tell you, and I have told him that if I don't have resolution by early on in the week, that I was going to move on to another company because it is a safety hazard. And again, this is the company that was recommended to us that was wonderful, 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 and I'm sure maybe in normal times they are. But at this point, it's, I've been given the dollar amount, I've been given everything, but he is still not getting, he is still not giving me the drawings. And I am told that I will have them. Monday, so we'll see, I'll let you guys know Monday night. I will let Eric answer the Garmin because we have had conversation with them, he has had conversation with MI. And maybe he can even pop in like a Westerville school update or anything along those lines if he wants to, so. That way you guys have that, I don't know that Westerville's really got much going on, but.
Thanks, Mayor. A couple, couple of quick things, so on the Garmin Miller. They did meet with staff before the holidays, they expect to have. Kind of sketch plans and, you know, programming options. Back in front of everyone for presentation to council, the soonest they would, I have that would be. I don't think they'll make the second meeting here in January, so, but, you know, I think you'll have it in time for your work session in February to kind of go through things. And then we need to set them up for a call by the council meeting or even the work session, I'm sure we can do that, so. I will obviously distribute it as soon as we get that in our hands. On MI, I'm hopeful, I had a productive discussion with them, obviously the holiday through, you know, a couple of weeks where people were out. People taking their end of the year vacations, things like that. But their staff and management staff is back, the chief and I finalized. A sign map which was sent over to them during, well, before the holidays or before the new year and. They got back to me on that and that's all going to be replaced to our desire and requests. And so you should see signs in the new development, all changed out and fixed come next week, we should see Peterson in there doing that on. MI is paying for that, so that's good. There are some other smaller items which get that fixed and my hope is to have a final report here, you know, if not by the second meeting. Definitely again by the next work session in the first meeting February to convey all of the stuff over, which would be great. And the trees, there's a number of trees that will be replaced. My guess is, well, you know, Jesse will review the agreement, but it's common to have agreements with the developers and. They'll guarantee that these will get done in the spring, so we can comfortably convey everything at the time, so it's, because there's a number of trees also that are. Still within, you know, year warranty that we're in the final phase anyway, so. A lot of things will have to, you know, if those go bad, they will have to be replaced within the year as well, so post-conveyance, so there's that item. And then Westerville Schools. They, we had a conversation, the. They're moving and grooving on their middle school, which is the one across, site for across from Hawthorne. Had a number of staff calls with them over the past month and they are going to get submission in for P and Z. Review by, I believe the February, first February meeting is their, their goal, so that they can start construction on that by summertime. So they are a very active group, so, and that will of course include everything that, you know, they need to do with that, so. Look forward to receiving that as well, that's all I have, unless there are questions.
Is there, is the middle schools scheduled yet for when they went open?
I believe, no, I have to ask that question in another staff meeting, I haven't seen a specific schedule, I think if they had their. They had their druthers, they're probably being 2022 by the time, you know, the school year, so I'd say September 2022 would be my guess, but we'll see what they say.
Eric, I do have one thing for you, only because I missed telling you in my meeting, and I know we've talked about this several times, and I just saw David's list. The walking, I know that we've been trying to get them to give us our friends and family discount for the walkway. That leads, the walkway that we've been talking about over from. In front of where we park, in front of the car. Will you track somebody down, hold them down until they tell us what they can do?
Yes, I, I, there, there's a contractor, one of their preferred contractors was sent to us, that gentleman, of course, had vacation time. He's going to come out so that we can, obviously when the asphalt companies open up here in a few months, we, if council chooses, we can get that job scheduled and done.
That would be awesome, so David, I think you're on here, that has been a number one topic that we have been talking about for a while. And just so you know, I had Girl Scouts write me a letter. Begging us to do, to get that completed, and I am not in disagreeance, I, I trip over that sidewalk every day that I walk through there, so.
Yeah, it's pretty rough.
It is rough, so there is, there is not one person on here that's going to argue with me with that, because I walk it every day. There's holes in it, there's, there's tree roots in it, there's everything, and now granted, if you look and walk, you know, you're not going to trip and fall. But it's bad, it needs redone, and we know it needs redone, and so it needs redone. So yes, if you can make that as much of a priority, Eric, making sure that we get them out here, I am aware that they can't come do it in December, January, February. But if we could get that scheduled, if it's something we need to go through council for budgeting purposes and everything, which we probably will. I would love to get, you know, get the amount so we can get through council and that be a huge priority this year.
Absolutely, Mayor, be happy to, and obviously, you know, I don't know what the cost will be, but you can wind that into some other projects and it's all tiff reimbursable.
Perfect.
Would this be the time to find out about the meeting with Franklin County regarding our?
Go for it. Eric?
Are you talking about the, yeah, I think Jesse can speak to this because you had a conversation with their staff and the prosecutor. I hope by this time it was Christmas as well, but let, yeah, let Jesse speak on that.
So actually, no, we, we have not, and that's what, we did meet, Tony, we met with the. We met with the city, I want to say it was the week before Christmas and. Discussed.
He means the county.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, the county. Entities mixed up, but yes, met with the county. And they were going to send us over some options of, as to. What we could make changes to, they were not opposed to our input on. Any number of requirements, but they, you know, they wanted to see what we were going to propose before that. Before they approved anything, Eric, am I, am I right to say that?
Yeah, that, that's correct, the, the meeting I felt was, you know, that we had with staff there was, you know, productive, got, circled the wagons. Because everybody had gotten busy, you know, and separated with COVID and, and Gene had left at right about that same time, so it was bringing Jesse up to speed on everything. And, yeah, they, they're open to a number of things and we're just, I think, yeah, you're right, holidays came in again and we'll, we'll reach out to them.
Are we talking about Yasmin Market by chance?
No.
No, 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 sorry, we're, we're talking about the county building department and some options for council to consider on changes. So we're working with their staff to get those done.
Is it that you're, who is it that you're meeting with at the county?
That would be their deputy director, she is, you know, over their building department, so that's who we're talking with, that's who was, came in with their building staff. They had a new RBO a few months back, have sat down with us physically with the mayor present, and so.
RVO?
That's the residential building official, like a CBO, you, you have to have those in order to oversee a building department under the law.
Which is why, which is why we have to go with sort of operating within their structure. Although, like I said, at the meeting, the deputy director was open to us providing some different requirements for the village, so I thought that was a good step for.
This gets, you know, this is the. The thing that I don't understand is why we cannot have a residential building official.
They're expensive, you can, absolutely, council can set up their own, we can set up our own building department, but it's expensive. And it's not necessary unless they, everybody really loves it. I think you've got other challenges like maintenance department amongst other things. But sure, if you guys want research on a building department, by all means, we can provide that.
But it does sound like, from, from what I heard, it does sound like they are going to be a little, a little flexible with us on. Possibly some of the things, Tony, that I think that you and I are interested in looking at and hopefully council will agree. So it does sound like we're moving in the right direction, because that was in the very first meeting that Eric and I had with them. We just kind of went over like the, and I don't want to go crazy into here. But like the doors and windows siding, things like that, that you and I, you know, that some of us just don't think that is necessary to have a permit for. It sounds like they're, they are potentially going to be agreeable for those things not to have to be done. So I think we're, we are moving in the right direction, we just got to get it done, handled. So, and then, you know, just making sure council agrees with all of that. So there we go, so I think we're, Tony, I think, I think we're finally getting somewhere. Other than a building department, our own building department, and again, that's up to council.
Well, you know, Eric has the tendency to describe things in the most. I don't know, dramatic way when he talks about creating a building department, you know, Franklin Counties are building inspector, that's what they do. And, and to create, and to have a building department is, it wouldn't, it shouldn't be anything more than maybe even saying our. Our code enforcement officer is our residential building official.
No, he has to be certified, so if he gets certified, yes, I'll let Jesse jump on that, there's a whole, there's a whole memo from Gene years back, we'll pull that back out again for.
The person that has to be certified is the building inspector, not the department.
Sure, I'm kind of done arguing it, I'll leave it to legal counsel at this point.
Okay, let's, let's see what they come back and say, and see if that's at, at least enough of an agreeance for everybody to determine that. We don't need to go further, and then if we don't like those answers, then we, I mean, again, we can definitely look into what it would take to have our own building department again. Because I believe that's the way it used to be, then we started going with Franklin County, I don't know exactly what happened between there. But I think it's a positive thing that we have going. But I think it's a positive thing that we have going on right now. And I think that they are going to be a little flexible with us. And I think residents would and will appreciate that. So if we can meet in the middle, I think it's something, I mean, I, it's a, it's a great start. So. We're getting there. Does anybody have any questions about that? Is there? I'm going to go with no.
No.
Alright.
Anything else on? We've kind of fell into P and Z, I think. So is.
Do you guys want to keep moving with P and Z?
The, yeah, we could, or you could, since we're, do you want to speak to code enforcement at all?
Yes, I can do any direction you want to go. I'm going to be very nice on here. I'm, I'm being recorded. So I'm, I'm just, I'm going to tread lightly. We have probably thirty applicants. At this time, I haven't found one that I'm interested in interviewing.
What position? I'm sorry. I didn't hear what position.
We probably have about thirty applicants.
Code enforcement officer.
Alright, yeah, for a code enforcement officer.
I'm sorry, I just didn't catch that. It was a glitch or something.
Oh, no, you're good. Now, I, I do have a resident that has reached out. So I want to use that one as a different person because I don't actually have. An applicant from that, just an inquiry. So I do want to point that out, that there's somebody that has reached out that lives in the village that is interested. I do not know their qualifications. I have not seen a resume or anything.
About the, there, there's one of the. P and Z applicants that also is interested. Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes. So I'm not sure that we really, you know, I'm not sure if he has any. The ones that, the, the applicants that we typically have gotten, and I'm going to say this as the administrative assistant that we had originally looked for and we just decided that Becky and Leo were going to continue to do what they were doing. And now, you know, I was warned, and I think we've been warned in the past about the applicants we get for planning and zoning. Most of them have. Again, I'm not talking about all of them, but most of them have maybe had a job for a couple of months and then they moved to another place and then another place and then another place that we already know we don't want that. That takes probably fifty percent of the applicants out. None of them have any sort of government experience, code enforcement. Enforcement of any, I, I, there's a couple of security guards. That's probably the closest thing I have to code enforcement.
The animal control.
An animal control. So, you know, anybody with any sort of planning skills, zoning skills, anything like that, I absolutely do not have one that has ten percent of that. Can they learn it? Absolutely. But I'm, I'm warning you that, that, that I do not have an applicant that has ever had any sort of. Remotely close to.
Qualification.
Qualifications. We have been looking for somebody since around December fifteenth because I really wanted to have somebody January first. And I'm no closer today than I was when Jason left. You know, at, at, right now, it's, I'm, I'm not stressed about it. I mean, I think by March first, I will totally be stressed about it and I don't want it to go that far. If anybody has a recommendation, let me know. I don't know, you know, right now, we don't do like the Indeed, like the paying Indeed version. You know, there, there are other options for us to try to pull from different pools that will actually advertise in. Different areas, but it can cost a hundred, two hundred dollars for an applicant. Just as FYI, I don't know if, you know, I, I, I'm sure we have the money somewhere, but it's not something we budgeted for. So. You know, I'm, I'm not sure if anybody has any interest in us paying to look for somebody. But I.
We're going to get someone who's decent. I don't see, you know, I mean, if it comes down to that, we need someone.
Well, what we're doing is not working.
So I'm sorry, what are you doing again? You're, you're going directly to indeed.com?
Yeah, like, no. So apparently there's different parts of Indeed, correct me. So that's what I'm talking about. But those are paid, those are paid things that you can actually get more than just random. With the applicants, I can say that there are probably some amazing people that can do great things. But they're all just general, like they're, they're, most of them are Uber drivers. Again, I can keep going. But I don't feel like we're getting into any of the professionals. So I don't feel like our ad is where, I feel like our ad would be placed somewhere else if we paid a little bit of money. That's my understanding.
Well, also, uh, you know, when I was. Doing some research on mayor, mayors and the typical paid for mayors and villages. There was a, there's, there's also a government site that, you know, people. A lot of, at least administrative people were posting and looking. Looking at, I, I'll go back and figure out which, which one it is because we should be, we should always be posting in there anyway.
If you find it, let me know because I will get it put in there today. So I, I, I think it's important to have somebody. I would love to have the time to being able to train them and we. You know, i- i- it's something that, again, if anybody has a recommendation, let me know. But that's where we are with that. Going over to, let's switch over to, does anybody have any questions? Planning and zoning or on code enforcement?
I'm going to bed. Is there anything else that? I can answer about the community stuff?
Not for me. I'm good.
I think we're good.
I'm sorry, guys. I do apologize, but I can barely keep my eyes open. I'm working again tonight. So.
Be well.
Bye.
Bye, guys. I look forward to seeing you all on Monday.
Okay.
I hope you guys enjoyed my email.
Oh, we will. Number one was already addressed.
Alright, well, we're making progress then.
There you go.
Bye, guys.
Okay, um, planning and zoning. I already have my thoughts, you know, a, a, as far as that goes. I, I have. What I believe we should do. But I would like to hear a couple of different comments because I know that this was a hot topic over the last two years. As far as the direction of planning and zoning, what we wanted to see happen, where we wanted it to go. That's why we added the two additional members and, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about it. So I sent everybody over the applicant's information. I didn't know if anybody has any insight or thoughts to it. Obviously, I will do my recommendation based on the way I am right now, but at this point, does anybody want to change my mind? So, and I know you don't know what my answer is.
Before you know, if you need to change your mind, what is your mind?
Well, no, I mean, I have, I have a fifty fifty that, that I'm going back and forth between. As you know, both Lisa and Donna would like to stay. And I, and some of you guys may not even know this, but Eddie is currently our non-voting member on planning and zoning. So we have Brady. Which is currently a voting member. Donna and Lisa are voting members. Both of theirs, both of their seats are up and we do have an already vacant non-voting member seat. So just so you're aware, there are technically three seats up. Donna, Lisa, and the non-voting, or, and we have an open non-voting. We can opt to keep Donna and Lisa, Donna or Lisa, you get the point. We can move one of them from a voting down to a non-voting. I do believe Donna would be easily willing to go to a non-voting, just so everybody's aware. So I have said from day one that I really wanted somebody. On planning and zoning from the new development. I'm sure everybody has heard me say that a hundred times. And that's where I have my problem. We have two applicants, I believe, from the new development, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm ecstatic. There's also one person in the old development that I think would be. Great asset to planning and zoning. Without a doubt. And I don't know if you guys, you know, I, I don't know if we should be talking specifically about individual people on this meeting. Does anybody want to comment to that?
I think if we, if we keep it elevated, I think that will be fine. We just.
Okay. But there is definitely somebody that is completely qualified on, in the old development. That was part of the facility committee. And the only thing that I can say to that is she was at the meetings, she was involved. And not because she, you know, she was definitely a leader. She took some, you know, she definitely took the, you know. Diane did a fabulous job, but I felt like her and Diane worked very well together. I feel like she can work well together. And I was highly impressed with her. There's, there's, and I do not know her on a personal level whatsoever. So I'm going to put that out there. We don't go to lunch together.
Right. You're, you're talking about the architect. Yeah, right. So we should just.
Yes. So let's leave it at that. So.
Yeah, the skillset is, is architect and I think my, my wish for P and Z was to. Was just to have somebody, have, because you don't have really anyone. Except for, you know, of course, Tony is the. Council liaison, but in P and C, the core group. She, she had, she, you know, has, understands the. Of the.
Building process.
Legalities and the, she, she, she knows, she knows about specs and she can quote. What's, what requirements are for the state of Ohio, stuff like that. I mean, she's got all that. She, she, she does all that. So. She has to meet building requirements and building code and all that. So.
She has an understanding of it. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So when you're, you know, I mean, when, I, I know that Tony is there and you can say, oh, it's eight foot off the. Front of the sidewalk, blah, blah. Well, she could do that too. She can do that talk. She could, she can do that talk. So. I, I think that's very much lacking in P and Z and I think it would be a great thing to have.
Right. And I, and so. So as you can see. Now, you know, let's, let's talk about a few things. We have the. Amphitheater project that could potentially be moving forward and we have the person that was the main ringleader of that. I would hate to not see them be a part of. The vision of that particular project. I think that's kind of. I'm not trying, I, I don't want to sound like I'm trying to. I, I, I feel like it would be. Disappointing to not have the main person involved. On planning and zoning with. The project that was spearheaded by one person. So, and she did, that was literally done. You know, she had asked about it. She, she had talked to us about it, but I mean, it was, it was her that went to. Light body. It was her, it was her that did the application. It was her that did everything. And this is a project that is probably going to be on the forefront this year. So, or maybe not. Maybe council is going to say otherwise, but. So then you go to Lisa. Lisa has always been the person that is the doer. We definitely have some hot debated arguments in there, but Lisa is also my person that is the total. I don't want to say the total opposite of me. But she definitely brings me back to reality on some things because, you know, a lot of times when you're sitting in these positions, you think about what you would like and what your friends would like and what all of that. And then I hear what she says and I'm like. I didn't really think of it that way. So she is definitely a good balance for, for the team because. Tony and I kind of see things over here and she's like, I don't want to say that I always agree with her, but she's the, she's the person that's over here and I feel like it brings us back in the middle. If you have too many people that all have the same mindset, then you end up going the wrong direction. As much as I would like to say, I want everybody on planning and zoning that agrees with me. And it's not good for us. I mean, it would make my life so much easier. And I don't always agree with Lisa, but. I will say she has been my hands-on. She is the one that takes these garden projects and things like that in the middle of planning and zoning and she is the doer. Like. You know, there's a lot of people that talk about it and then there's people that talk about it and do it. She is the person that talks about it and does it. So you do start to learn these things once you are on planning and zoning with these people. Who does what? Everybody else on planning and zoning can't say enough about, but we're not talking about them. So don't feel like, I don't think Brady and Eddie are amazing. So. We're talking about Donna and Lisa right now. So I, that's where I'm torn. I feel like pulling Donna. Knowing that they have been on planning and zoning, we can, you know, keeping the same core team. We move forward and. We're miles ahead versus getting new people, you know, four, three new people, then you feel like you're going backwards before you can go forward again. So that's, that's the quick version. Now that said, I really want somebody from the new development. So I would like four members. No, I'm kidding. I mean, ultimately, if, if that were the case, this would be, I mean, I wouldn't have any issues, but that's where I'm torn because I really want somebody from the new development. I think we have two members that really want to stay. And that's where I'm, that is where I'm torn. Those are, those are my thoughts to it. And will I make a decision before Monday? Yes. I know which way I'm leaning, but that's really where I wanted to hear what your guys' thoughts are.
I would say, for me, I would go with. I can, I totally understand keeping the few people whose seats are on as part of that committee. But I would really, really lean heavily towards getting someone from the new development into a voting spot. If that means someone has to step down from a voting to the non-voting. You know, that's, you know, I, I don't think it's as a punishment or saying you're, you've been demoted. It's. We really wanted to get someone in a voting spot from the new development. That, that would be, that's my only real priority here.
Okay, I'm going to toss one more thing. And, and Mark, that's my problem. And I don't disagree with you. I feel like that is that. I'm on record saying that. I don't know how many times. That, that, that's my bigger problem. There is one other option that I will throw to you guys, and this is why we wanted to have this. The other, the final option is. We have three voting and three non-voting. And adjust our scenario if. We, and, and some people may have a heart attack at me even saying that, but the other option is we fix our planning and zoning to be. Three voting, three non-voting, just for more insight. And we do have several projects, I mean, from the amphitheater, from all of the green space. We are working on quite a bit of stuff this year and this is the year of, hopefully, the year of get some of this stuff done. That would solve those problems. We, then it's a no-brainer just as to who's, who's voting and who's non. And that to me is very quick and simple. But I also think losing some of these people is breaking too. So. We have people that really want to get involved. We have people that really want to volunteer and I hate to say no. I mean, I am thrilled at the amount of people that we have. And I think that that's great moving forward. So. So that's my, my final rebut is, does anybody have a thought to having three voting, three non-voting? We have three voting, two non-voting now.
But I, I actually had a different quick question. In, in the documents you sent to us, I don't see any sort of letter of intent from Donna.
I may not have it. It may have just been verbal. I know I got an email from her, but there was other stuff in the email that. Let me see what I have. But she does.
And I, and I, I, I ask that because specifically. She. She has missed other opportunities in the village because she didn't provide written, you know, if the requirement was, you need to notify us in writing. And then she didn't. And so she was.
I haven't.
Or looked for things in the past. So, so you do have it? I just want to make sure because that's a, you know, if the minimum threshold is notify us in writing and you can't meet the minimum threshold, then that's. That is telling.
Do you guys want me to send this to you guys? Just so you can see it?
No, I mean, if you say it's there, that's fine. I mean, I'm, I am aware of her and her qualifications. I just need to know that she met a minimum threshold.
She does. She, and in her letter, she basically does say that she wants to continue, just not as the chair. As a voting member, but Eric, I believe, has talked to her outside of that and she would be okay with it not voting is, was definitely my understanding.
Yeah, she, she, she's got a lot on her plate and, and she definitely wants to take part and, and non-voting is a, is a good position because she can still. Function on those projects. You know, the, the purpose of the non-voting was obviously a lot of ways to get new members in there to move them up to voting members when people step back. And so, you know, Eddie's next one on the. The ring there and then obviously it opens up other positions. So, and, and I think that's a great idea regarding, you know, the mayor and I discussed the third. Non-voting member is easy to add, then you can have two members and there's plenty of projects to do. So plenty of input.
I'm also of the opinion that planning and zoning can have as many non-voting members as it seems fit, right? I mean. All that, in my opinion, a non-voting member is just somebody who's willing to give their time. Right? That's, that's any, anybody who's willing to volunteer to the positive ends of planning and zoning. That's a non-voting member in, in my brain, whether, whether people agree with me or not, that's. You know, that's how I see.
And I agree with you.
Yeah, look at that. Twice, twice in a day, Tony and I agree. It's, you know, somebody, somebody shake the temperature in hell, but, uh. You know, the, you know, so I, I don't even understand the notion of limiting non-voting members, right? Any, anybody who is willing to show up, oof, you are a non-voting member.
Completely agree with Brian and. Right now, what we discuss is the two voting members and the non-voting member.
Yeah. So, so as far as. You know, the other vote, so we've, we've talked about Donna and what, what, what her situation is. My. My thought on the other voting member whose seat is up is that I. And I will be as delicate as I can here, but the other voting member who sees up, we recently got an email. About property and their desire to have a first right of refusal on sale of the property. And it is my opinion that that email borders on. An ethical concern on how. They are using their position within the village.
So can I step in real quick on this one? Um, what's interesting here, two things, because I, the mayor shared that email with me. Um, and obviously Jesse's on the line too, so he can correct me if I get this, uh, off a little bit. But I did review the property that boundaries there. It is actually platted right of way. And typically the way villages and cities handle this in Ohio is that if, and this is not my recommendation, but I'm just going to repeat to you the process. Typically, if the villages or cities wish to, you know, vacate such a right of way. Uh, it's a matter of simply what it does is to get split evenly between the adjacent property owners and giving back to them. So, and, and different cities have different processes. The people who benefit from that are the adjacent property owners. So I just want everyone's clear on that, that she, if the village ever would do that, she would be one of those that benefited irregardless or regardless, or. Uh, she would benefit because she's an adjacent property owner. Um, she, she, part of that came up because she's not fully understanding the position and she. There was discussion, obviously, in P and Z and at this council for how people could care for the ground that they were adjacent to, and that's still obviously a, uh, some mid-tier project for us to discuss legislative wise. If, you know, from, and that all relates back to the maintenance stuff, and I also don't want to get into it here. It's not the time or place, but. Just want to set the record straight on that. However, my recommendation is never give back right of way and, uh, ground unnecessarily. Because if we do that, we would cut off our, our reserve aid to the south. We can talk more about that later.
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't really talking about that. We were just talking about the principle of the thing. We weren't trying to delve into that discussion at this point.
Correct.
So, but out here, I'll, I'll wrap up. Thank you for your input, Eric, and I'll wrap up my thought on that, right? Is that A. That the individual that we are discussing has been on planning and zoning now. At least three years. I would, well, that's why I'm saying at least, I'm thinking, uh, you know, I, I'm trying to remember when they joined and I can't think right off the top of my head. But I'm, I'm pretty certain I could put three years on.
It's four plus because she was here when I was here.
Well, there you go. So, uh, so quite a long time to not, to be on planning and zoning that long and not have any kind of understanding of how that. That process would work is also telling to me. And then lastly, my point was really that it, about a, an attitude of the ethics of the transfer of property. That anyone thinks that they would get a first right of refusal. Based on anything, right? Even if, even if the village's attitude were such that we would put that land on the open market. To think that they would get a first right of refusal, um, for lack of a more elegant way to say it, sticks in my craw. Right? There, there is a, there is an attitude of entitlement there that I don't quite. Believe is appropriate for one sitting in a public official's seat. And that's my, the entirety of my thought on it.
And then I, I want to put one thing, and, and only because you guys may not be aware of this. Because there is more of a background story and I do not want to get into the he said, she said, but I'm going to a little bit. Um, I met with somebody within my first thirty days of sitting in the chair. And it was brought to my attention that it was everything but promised, but never. How am I going to say this? It was never finished that. There was a per, the, that there was a resident that was told that they were going to be able to take over the village property. And that was their understanding that that's what they were told and that they just needed to know how, you know. How do we finish going about it? Because we were supposed to have this done. And it was not, I will say, it was not the person of who we're talking to. And I said, look, I don't know anything about it. I've been sitting in this chair for thirty days. Um, I said, write it up for me and tell me exactly what you're trying to do, you know, all of that kind of stuff. So I did get all of that in writing, and they were requesting that the property be transferred to them. So this has been an ongoing thing, apparently, that people were told certain things and promised certain things by other people. So I just kind of, and I think that there are people that are nervous that, you know, maybe. We're going to do something. Um, we were pretty, you know, I thought, Tony, we were pretty specific, and Eric, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we had no interest in getting rid of the property. That's a village property and the story.
That's my thing. Generally what we've said policy-wise.
Yeah. So I'm not sure who said what over the last thirty days to bring this back up again. Um. But the, you know, and I'll say it on here, I don't have any interest in getting rid of anything that's not mine. So, and it's not mine. So. The village owns it. I don't think it's our place to get rid of it. Um, then it does bring to the next topic, and this is, this is just something, Diane, I think we are starting to get into the weeds of something. So I'm going to make a point. This is a conversation that Tony, we did start talking a little bit in planning and zoning because. What we're, what we have is people are taking care of village property. So that's where some of this stuff is coming. So we have people on both sides of this particular property that are maintaining village property. Should they be? Should they not be? Should we be maintaining it? Should we? And then the only reason I'm bringing that up is because then it goes further. Now we have all of this green space that is village property. Behind the new MI homes. And on a Saturday, Eric, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but on a Saturday I had residents freaking out. Because, um, there were people that were destroying our green space. Because it was behind their home. Um, Eric stopped it immediately. Um, we've had to put signs out behind people's properties that they're not happy about. And how do we maintain it? How do we monitor it? How do, what do we need to do to make sure that people are, are or are not maintaining the green space? That abuts to their property. So this is a much bigger topic, um, because we can't let one person do it, not another, or can we? Um, but at this point, you know, there are people that spent tens of thousands of dollars to have wooded backyards and their next door neighbor is cutting out their wooded backyard. And they're not happy about it. So, um, we think we have that stopped for right now, but we have other people that are cutting into green space that we can't see. So the only way we know is when neighbors are complaining. So point being, it's a topic that we're going to have to pick up and discuss. Um, at another meeting at another time, but, um, soon, very soon.
Right now.
You're going to see a lot in the spring.
Right now, we're supposed to be talking about who we're pointing to planning and zoning.
You're correct.
And as far as the green space things, what we should probably do is look into getting a code enforcement officer.
That would be a great idea. Do you know?
Full circle here.
We did. Um, so let me ask you this, then I think if I have the, um, if I have some people's thoughts that. Um, having three non-voting members, we could bring that up and add it to the agenda on Monday night. Um, I don't know your guys' feelings towards that.
Zoning, I think is, on January, is whether we want to have three more members. Right now, we need to talk about who we want.
Well, I think I already have my answer if we, well, maybe not.
No, I don't.
You know, it could.
That's what I'd like to do, yeah.
I know.
Be that, it could be that, you know, um. Again, P and Z is, uh, has to be able to manage their meetings. And so non-voting. There's a non-voting member. If, if there's somebody who comes in on a project basis, then maybe they can be. A non, maybe perhaps a definition, more of a definition of a, a non-voting member, or maybe there's a. Uh, some definition is that they're coming in on a project. So they are representing a project that they want to work on. As a non-voting member, and they come in for the length of that project. And then. You know, that's their term is the length of the project or something. I, there might be some other way to do it because, uh. But, but anyway, I think as far as the voting members go, I think it's good to cycle people out. Um, and, uh. Still be able to, as you say, move them to a not, if that's what they want to. If that's what they want to do is be able to participate in the conversation. I think the chair. Whoever's going to be the chair needs to know, needs to feel comfortable that they can manage. The conversation and have it, you know, have a civil meeting. With, with these, with the members. And if, if five is too many, just for them to manage in terms of asking people to. Move on to the next topic, you know, and that, that's really, to me, it's meeting management and, and not having it turn into a. Uh, situation where nothing's being done because everybody wants to. You know, have the, there's too much talking and not enough, you know, making decisions. So. I think it's a matter of non-voting members are a matter, many, a matter of meeting management. And the strength of the chair to be able to manage the meeting appropriately.
And I don't disagree with that, but I think that that's always going to be changing. Um. Since I've been there, we've had, I believe, three chairs. So, and we're getting ready to have a new one. Um. I, I, I love the idea of, you know, as many, you know, as whatever, but ultimately, at the end of the day, I feel like, this is how I'm going to say it. I don't want to reinvent the wheel and just bring people in and out depending on what the project is. Um.
I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, I'm saying your voting members are the most important ones.
They are.
And they need to show up. And if it, if they don't show up, a non-voting member is not allowed to take their seat and vote for them, right? So we, we're talking about two different things. So the, the voting, the people who are voting are, is the. Is, is your core group, and they're the ones that are most important. Um, so. So do, you know, in terms of. Do what you, you know, do, you got to run the, however you want to run P and Z, but the core is the voting members. And so the question is, 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 uh, you know, do you, do you want to have Lisa? It sounds like. Um, you know, do you want to have Lisa? She, she's the only person on the bubble here. Do you want to have her? She's been in P and Z a long time. Do you want to have her? Ask if she can move to a non-voting membership and, and move in someone from the MI section. Uh, to give them, uh, to get an opportunity to get some fresh blood in there or not.
So here's, here's where we're at. Brady is who I'm hoping is going to be, and I, I think Tony will probably agree with this. Um, Brady would be the chair. Um. On the fence, and, and I'm going to go back and forth on this because, and Tony, I'm going to have you chime in because I know you're the one that's worked with them a lot. Eddie should be the one technically that moves up. Eddie does want to move up. Um. Eddie is, he's from our new development. Then we have.
Development.
Eddie Bella lives on Jordan Road.
Yeah, he lives on, yeah, he's not from the new development. That's what I'm saying. So in a perfect world. I, I'm going to have to say this Monday in the meeting, correct? For a recommendation, so I might as well do it now. Okay, Brady. Here's what, here's where we're, this is where we are. Brady, Beth, somebody from the new development, which we have two to choose from, and I have no problem going through and choosing that. Um, and as my recommendation, Eddie, Lisa and Donna. Those are our three and three. In my perfect world, that's the way it would actually end up being Brady, Beth and, um. Somebody from the new development. The right way to do it would actually be Brady, Eddie, and probably somebody from the new development. And the reason, again, just because Eddie should move up technically. That's the way that it should be, but in a perfect world. I feel like it should be Brady, Beth, and somebody from the new development. But having Beth there regardless, I think would be, um. It is, is going to be helpful.
So I, I don't, I don't know Eddie. Who's, uh. Has Eddie been on the?
Yeah, he was also on the charter committee with me or the charter commission with me. He's real smart, very conscientious. Um, you know, young, but, uh, he works in software, but he, the company that he works with is specifically tablet software that. Uh, supports like the foster care system, something like that. It's, I mean, he's a, he's a smart conscientious guy. That's what I.
He does what he's supposed to do.
Yeah, and he's up to speed. That's kind of the.
Yeah, and he's been on planning and zoning for, I, I think, since we added the non-voting seats.
Yes.
You know, I, I personally like to say that Brady is, you know, I, how would I put, you know, if I were to start a bromance. Brady'd be my man that I go to say, hey, are you looking for a guy? Because he's actually read the code book. You know, he's gone through and read the whole thing. So I'm looking at these people from their, their qualifications and what they bring to the table. To address the issues of planning and zoning is, is looking at. And that's why I'm in favor of, uh, Beth. Who has, you know, work, work experience that relates to planning and zoning. And then, uh. You know, the other person that I would have is be the person from the new development. You know, as, you know, not so much their qualifications. I mean, their qualifications would be that they're from the new development. You know, and that's how I look from, look at the, uh, you know, the people that we're going to appoint to voting members. It's, you know, Donna and Lisa are going to be involved if they want to be. I mean, that's just the kind of people that they are. You know, and I don't believe that they, you know, are going to, uh, you know, disappear if they're not on the planning and zoning commission. And that's why I'd like to have new blood, for one thing, and, and start looking at people. From their qualifications and what they bring to the table. And that's why I think that, um, that Beth. And is it the, is it Chris, the guy from the new development?
Philip and.
And the one, the one person I think is sending a resume and letter of intent and all.
We should have both from them. Hang on.
Philip is on Ponderosa, so Philip is not in the.
He's not. Okay, I'm wrong then. Okay, so we have one.
Yeah.
I'm totally wrong then.
That's, that's where I would like to see planning and zoning go. Further direction.
Samuel Young.
That's the one.
Yeah, that's the, the top one on Wolf Birch.
Yes.
Yeah.
Weird name for a street.
Exactly. Who did that?
Not me.
I know. Okay.
Or string my backyard, I'm not sure.
So, okay, so this is still where we are. Like, I feel like I, I have a good idea of what, I don't know that I've heard from everybody. Mark, okay, yeah, you said the new development too. I feel like I have a good idea. So this is, this is still where I. Would love to see, and if you guys don't want to do it, we don't have to do it, and whether or not we do it, um. I would still like to see three and three. And I don't want to change it to where it's unlimited. I really don't want to change it to where we're, we allow up to five. I think once you start getting too many people in these meetings, it does become a headache. As you can see, we have six people here and it's not horrible. Um, but I feel like once you really start getting more than that and it's not six people, you add me and, you know, whatever, but you guys. I feel like once you do start getting more than that, um, too many hands in the pot can slow us down. It, it's not always. The more the merrier. Um, sometimes it does slow you down because you have too many people going too many different directions. Again, that's where you go back to the management. Whoever's in charge can pull people back, but it's not as easy as it sounds. Um, I've tried to pull you guys back a couple of times. It doesn't work. The, I'm kidding. Um. So, I mean, does anybody have an issue with that? If not, we're going to leave it alone and we're going to decide between. Donna and Lisa. That's, that's basically what we're down to. So we either add a third seat or it's the decision between Donna and Lisa. That's where, that's ultimately where we sit.
Donna, for one. The, a non-voting member?
Not, yeah, I'm only talking non-voting. We already have, we have the list for the voting. Regardless, basically, we have four people that can go into voting. One of them's going to fall back into non-voting. So that's, we have four seats taken, period. I think we're all in agreeance on those four. Correct me if I'm wrong. Do I need to list them? Brady, Beth, new development, and Eddie. Yeah, there you go. Um, so then we boil back down to Donna and Lisa. Not that we're not talking about the other people. I think that, you know, there, there are great qualifications in all of them. Number one, they want to volunteer. Um, so hopefully we can get some of them on council, and you know, we have some thoughts on that, but, um, next year, um. So basically, we're at Donna and Lisa. We can either add another seat, or we pick one.
Well, I'll be honest, I, I. I think that Lisa and Donna both have, uh, good qualities and bad qualities.
We all do.
And I, uh, would really like to see new blood completely.
Okay, so you're actually saying pick two new ones from, one new one from, and move on. I have a screen at my top, so I'm going to go through the list. Um, I'm just going down, so I feel like I'm hitting on you. Um, Diane, thoughts? And just to be fair, if anybody doesn't want to talk about this, let me know, but this is exactly what I don't want to do Monday night when we have, when we have, um, a football game at eight o'clock. So that's why I feel like we're doing this right now. So if anybody doesn't want to do this right now, let me know. So Diane.
So you want me to do the vote? I mean, we, we've agreed on the, the voting members, right?
We have four members taken. We have one person left as it sits, or we can add one more seat. That's, or whatever. As it sits, we have one.
I, I, I would, I would agree that, uh, I, I would like to see fresh blood. I, I don't want to disrupt the whole P and Z, but. I, I think that, um, you know. Uh, when you have people who, whose qualification is, is that they've. Uh, whose basic qualification is that they live in the village and, and, you know, they've got a vision or whatever. I think a non-voting position is more, except maybe for the chair. I think a non-voting position is fine. And, and if there's none available, then, um. Drop, drop them off or drop one off, um, just. drop, drop them off or drop one off, um, just. Move on.
So you would prefer a new person over Donna and Lisa?
Oh my gosh, okay, no. I was just about to pop some tags.
Oh, it's some, I'm sorry, gave some background noise, um.
That's me, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Um, uh, uh. Yeah, you know, I, I know that, uh, uh, I, I think Donna is into the, um, amphitheater. And if there's some way that, that if, if there's, that she can participate in that discussion or, uh, without having to be, uh, uh, a member of P and Z because I, I don't know. I don't, I think that fresh blood is, is good. So, but, um, that's just my opinion.
Well, it's, it's gonna be your guys' opinion because it doesn't matter what I recommend. If you guys don't agree with it, we're gonna end up back in the circle on Monday night. So that's kinda where I want everybody to agree today that these are pretty much gonna be, to make this a smooth sailing. So, um, on Monday, again, I don't care if we get back in the discussion, but obviously we've been thirty minutes so far. And if we do this Monday night, because if I, if I would've come in and said XXXXX and you guys were like, hey, no, um, we would've started all over again. So you guys have to approve my recommendation. So with a yay or nay, and if everybody's nay, then we start all over again. So that's kind of.
What then is your final recommendation?
Yeah.
Thumbs up for a thought. Yeah, cuz, cuz right now, so far you've given us a, A or B.
No, we have, well, Brady, Beth, Samuel Young, Eddie. And we have one seat left.
Yeah, so what's your recommendation? Right, you can't say, and question mark.
Lisa.
Okay, so there, there, there is the recommendation.
That, that's not the new blood.
No, he asked what my recommendation was, Tony. That was, that was my first initial thought. So, you know, and again, I'm gonna give you my clarifications. Do I think Lisa and, I could've gone Lisa or Donna, to be completely honest. Lisa is the green space person that I feel like Donna is the amphitheater person. So go flip a coin. I mean, I, I don't, I don't have a preference between either or.
Well, what are, what are, who are the other ones that are available?
Uh, we have Mary France, we have Phil Carter, like, yeah, we have, uh, and let's back up for a second. I'm in the opposite way of Tony and Diane. I think when you start all over again, doing a whole bunch of new people, you go backwards. So.
I won't let that happen.
Okay, good. I wanna know that. So I, and I think Brady is gonna be an amazing leader if he does take the chair. So I feel like that, that's gonna be something in itself. Um, but, you know, the person from the new development has never, in my understanding, this person has never been a part of anything, um, in the village. So there may be some getting up to speed. He's, we are, we are fully. Eddie, again, he's very smart. We don't have to worry about that. But again, he's still new. I mean, he's still only been there five months. So it's something that, you know, Donna and Lisa do bring the perspective of three years, four years, five years. Um, we have nobody on here that has been on planning and zoning for more than six months. Brady will be our oldest person on planning and zoning. So that's why I feel like having a Donna or Lisa on planning and zoning, you have somebody that can say, oh yeah, I remember talking about that two years ago, and this is why we didn't do it, or this is why we did do it, or whatever. Um, that was my theory, my thought as to having all brand new people in less than six months, but I'm, I'm the only person that's gonna do a recommendation. You guys have to yay or nay it, but that's my thought behind it. Having the oldest person six months is a little nervous for me. Um, but guess what? Tony, like you said, we're gonna move, we're gonna keep moving forward no matter what we end up deciding. So yes, I would say that's my list. Um, so now I can say it, Brian, change my mind. The rest of the way. So I have two people that want somebody brand new. So already I can tell you that they don't agree with my list. So let's go to Mark or Brian, let's go to Brian. He's on my screen.
I, I can tell you, I, I think that there is a big value to institutional knowledge, right? Uh, what I would point to is that in the year that I've been back on council, how many times have we looked and said, hey, Brian, this happened when you were on council. What the hell were you all thinking? Right? Having, having some amount of continuity as a value.
Yes.
Uh, uh, to that end, I have, I, I would not say no to your list. However, my preference would be Donna over Lisa.
Okay.
But, but it's not enough for me to say no, but I, I, I will, I will voice that preference.
And just see, and for the record, Brian, and I'm not saying MI would not have given us the money, but if it weren't for Brian's information about the graphs, he remembered that twenty-five, that's when that was brought to light. Again, I'm not saying MI wouldn't have written the check and MI didn't know and wasn't planning on it, but I know none of us knew. So.
I think I'm the one here for the historical reference.
There you go, Tony.
I've been going to these meetings for twelve years now, guys.
Okay, Mark, what do you got to say?
Um. I am pretty flexible. I'm willing to, when it comes to Donna or, um, shoot, name just ran out of my head.
Lisa.
Lisa, thank you. Um. I, I could go either one of them. The, the, I don't wanna, I'm just gonna say they're pretty interchangeable to me.
Ouch.
I mean, not, 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 not in a bad, I mean.
I agree.
Which you want?
They're both good. They're both, they both are dedicated to this. They've both been there for a long time. It, it's two good picks. You pick which one you want. I mean.
No, I, I agree. Take heads or tails.
Is there, is there anybody else that cares about, I mean, I'm a plant person, so is there anybody else that cares about green space, plant, plantings and things like that besides Lisa?
I know I care about, it may not.
You do not. Stop it.
You do. I just nodded strongly as some people.
I would agree. I, I.
The butterflies. I still haven't forgotten that.
Yes.
Devil's advocate is the way I look at it. I thought, I would like, if I had to choose, I would, uh, I would take Donna over Lisa if I were to pick.
And then you're the one left.
And then I think the question is, Tony, do you pick Donna over Lisa enough that you'd be like, nope, I can't have Lisa, or are you just saying that's your preference, but?
I don't really want any one of them, to be honest with you, because I, I, you know, I, I'm tempted to go into, ask, we go into executive session because there's issues with Lisa that she's been on that committee for so long and really hasn't, you know, absorbed a lot of the information or a lot of the concepts that you need to understand to be a good member. And Donna has said things in public on public platforms that are an embarrassment to the village. And I don't think she should be a member of any, you know, if you wanna hear exactly how I feel about it, that's how it is. Donna should not be. But I, but with that being said, I'd pick Donna over Lisa because she has a great work ethic.
Okay, I have one more question then for you, not just Tony. You have resumes that I forwarded to you and I'm sure every single one of you looked at them, read them and reviewed them. So who is your next person? Again, change my mind. So who, who, out of all of those, who's, who is next in line for planning and zoning if we take out Donna and Lisa?
Mary Kay has been to, that's where I go, is that she's to meetings. She's actually gone to other meetings.
She's, she's been involved with MPCA as well. Agreed.
Uh, community association. And then I think, you know, in the spirit of raising people up that start off, Mary Kay's the one that has showed interest in our village and has been to meetings. I haven't seen any of these other people.
Okay, I'm not disagreeing. So I, I, I would agree with that. What do you, and I'm gonna go back through. Go ahead, Diane.
If I were to pick, it would be Beth, uh, Sam and Mary Kay.
Okay. Diane?
I just, uh, uh, in terms of, um, non-voting, I, I think just as much as we can, we need to involve the MI section. So that's my only thing.
We only got one from the MI.
Yeah.
So.
That, is it, is the MI guy, is that the one that, uh, is, uh, is?
Samuel Young.
Is that, is that? The, the one that smokes a lot, uh, does the green space stuff? Who was interested in code enforcement? Which one was that one? Was that, am, am I?
No.
No.
I, I was wrong. No, I was, I was, I am wrong on that. So, um, that was Philip Carter. And, and again, he seems very interested in getting involved. Um, he has reached out to me a couple of times. So definitely interested in getting involved. And, and all of these people obviously are interested in getting involved. Um, so I mean, it's something that, you know, I, I know I'm not getting into this right now, but, you know, once we start talking about the lake, maybe there's, there's a couple of people we can involve in, you know, um, some ideas for the lake, and that's a different topic and just something we've been talking about.
So, so Philip, the one I was talking about, he is on the MI side, right?
No, I was wrong. No, he said he was on Ponderosa and I missed that. I don't know why. I thought he was new. I feel like he's newer to the neighborhood, but not new. Am I, am I still totally wrong?
Just the last couple of years, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think you might have, you know, uh, you know, sometimes people wanna be involved and they go to a couple of meetings and they say, and they end up backing out because they don't have, they realize they don't have the time. So some people have to try it out. So you can have someone on the reserve list, you know, a first and a second, in case the, uh, just someone just decides they can't do it.
Okay. Anybody else? Now, you, you realize we're going through all of this and then we're gonna bring David and Joe.
Uh, we, uh, only, only just cuz we brought in another name, I'll, I'll continue to voice my preference that I would prefer Donna over Mary Kay.
Can this get any more complicated?
Well, again, that's why I would rather do it today cuz I, yeah. Mark, do you have anything to say?
Uh, nothing further from me.
Okay. Because again, I, you know, that's where I'm torn between having somebody that's been on there for a while. Um, Tony, I, I do appreciate the comments that you made because that's something, you know, that's something that some people do, um, take seriously and I, and, you know, sometimes we forget about stuff like that. So, um, all right. I may send you guys out an email in a little bit and just kind of, I'm gonna think about this for the next hour, um, and give you, is there anybody that's gonna object to knowing that you have, let me ask you this, knowing that we all pretty much have our voting members down? Um, is there anybody that's gonna object to the two non-voting? And is there anybody, and we don't have to pass it as an emergency, we don't have to do anything, but if we started legislation to add a third person, is there anybody opposed to that, or is there anybody that just doesn't wanna do it? And not.
I, I don't want a third person.
Okay.
I, I, I would leave it up to, um, to you.
Okay.
I think we had to talk about it in planning zoning.
Okay.
Yeah, I would all. Sort of default to, I mean, as you say, it's going from five to six. Six is not too unwieldy. We have a committee to have, but if they really would feel like, oh, that's gonna bog us down and we can't function, then I'd let them kind of weigh in at least a little bit.
Well, again, we never even had two non-voting before. So having that in itself has just been, i- is actually great. So, you know, I'm not opposed to it. It, it's, it's something that, again, just kinda wanted to get an idea cuz I don't wanna go through all of the work of putting it up there if everybody is like, no, I don't have any interest. So we'll talk to planning and zoning, see how they feel about it. Um, I'll send out an email in a little bit and let you guys kinda know which one I'm leaning towards. I'm gonna let you know that, um, hearing the comments definitely does give me a little, um, going back and forth between a couple of things and, um, I, I really do feel like we need somebody on there that has been on there for more than six months. And I do feel like I, I hear everybody with the new people as well. So I, I, I can appreciate both comments, like, completely. So I'll send you guys out my list here in a little bit, just so you guys can be prepared for it. And if there's anybody that's absolutely going to object to it, um, I don't know that it matters because as long as I've got four or five of you on board, we're good. Um, so I, I think we'll be fine knowing that we at least got that far. So I think most of us are at least ninety percent happy with the way it's gonna turn out. So let me decide between the last person. I'll send it out to you guys. That way you're prepared for it and you guys can calm down before Monday. If it turns out that way. Okay, let's move on. Diane, to something else.
We are, actually, we've been, we have, are through the list, so.
Even better.
Anyone have anything new they wanna bring up? It is nine forty-four.
Right. Um, no, there's nobody on here. Okay, I'm gonna send out an email to Kim and find out when we can have our meeting. Um, I will let you guys know when Mike Flickender can have his meeting. Um.
And you'll set up the, the meeting for the community that, um, Tuesday, the twentieth?
The nineteenth, wasn't it?
Um, so.
Twenty of us planning and zoning.
Yes.
Right. The nineteenth, sorry, nineteen.
Do we know, he didn't say what time. Do we, are we just gonna assume seven?
Yeah, I would think so.
And I need to make sure that John's okay with that. Um, if John's not okay with it, I'm still gonna go ahead and do it because we can definitely talk about fees and things like that, and then we can have a couple of things on the agenda if he's not ready. Um. Um, 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 so yes, I will do that. And then Brian, just whenever, um, you set it up with chief, just make sure we carbon, either let me know or carbon copy Becky, just so we get that.
Well, I'll do that during the meeting on Monday, right?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Perfect. Um, and then I don't really.
And then on the, on the Franklin County, um, next meeting, who's, who's working on getting the next meeting for Frank- Franklin County and code enforcement or?
Uh, yeah, no, no, Jesse and I are working on that. And as soon as we, we get options back from them, we'll get it represented to council.
Okay.
Awesome. Um, and then I'm gonna give you guys, I have not made the final, anything with AquaDoc, just so you guys know. Um, I, they were out here, um, and I was told, I was told that there are some issues with the, um, aerators, and I've not heard exactly what the issues are. So I'll keep you guys posted and let you know. Um, as of right now, I am leaning towards just moving forward on the two ponds that we have always done. Um, I, I, I've not done anything. I'm probably not gonna sign anything with AquaDoc until we talk about, I'm hoping, I'll say this. I know next Monday, the big plan is to talk about moving forward on the projects that we wanna move forward on and, you know, priorities and all that kinda stuff. Um, hopefully we can take the last, you know, I'm gonna say this, few minutes. Um, I sent you guys a dredging thing that is a number that's through the roof. And just so you guys know, and you guys may not have seen it yet, um, that is from that Metropolitan place. I have, um, Brad working on an estimate again also. Um, as you guys are aware, dumping is the large cost. Finding somewhere to let this stuff dry out is going to save us hundreds of thousands of dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, whatever. You guys can see the estimate on there. Um.
Um, two hundred eighty-one thousand dollars for transportation and disposal.
There you go. Um, so that is the problem. The, the problem is not dredging. Anybody can come in here and scoop the stuff out. That is not where the cost is. The cost is transporting tons and tons of wet dirt out. So if anybody has a recommendation, anybody can get it removed. Getting it removed is the problem.
We're, we're coming around a full circle again here, guys.
Where do you wanna take this stuff? I, I think that's maybe still what I'm missing. Where are we taking the dirt? Because that's, that is two hundred eighty-one thousand dollars.
But what we're talking, what you keep talking about is waiting for it to dry. What I, I, I guess I'm just doing a horrible job of getting this point across everyone, is if we dry out the, the lake, if we drain the lake, the material that's gonna be coming out isn't gonna need to dry out somewhere.
Once you go down a foot, it's gonna be wet.
That is the, the soil analysis came back with that fact that anything, when they, they did the soil analysis, they dug down past a foot. And when it gets past a foot, it's fifty percent water. That's the soil analysis. That's science. That's not theory. And so with that soil analysis, you, you go to the various dump places and you give them the soil analysis and they're saying they don't want it because it still has a lot of, right, well, for a variety of reasons, but that's one of them. It's.
And I, I just, I, I wanna make sure that everybody, you know, everybody is aware of one thing. Um, I, I'm not trying to make myself seem better or anything, but I have spent hours talking to dumping sites. Um, excavators, you name it, and I personally have gotten nowhere either. I mean, you see where I've gotten to the same places that we've been before. The problem is the weight of the dirt. Once they get down a foot, they've seen the soil analysis because that's the first thing they ask for. I will tell you Metropolitan did send me an email that says that we, in order to make that happen, we will have to do a couple hundred more dollars worth of testing for the, for the lower price one. Um, that's based on the fact that the test results, which he believes will come back in our favor. There is some other testing that they have to do to be able to take it to the cheaper place, just as an FYI. And it may say that in there, but if not, I do have an email from that. Um, we go back to the muck sucker option. Um, we go back to the muck sucker option, you know, it's early in January. I know some people had given the blessing to try it. Um, I'm not, I'm, I'm gonna say at first I was always a huge fan of that, but I don't think it's gonna be anywhere near enough to what we need. Um, but I know that there's people that were interested in at least trying it. Um, I think we're gonna spend twenty-five thousand dollars. It's not even gonna be a tip of the iceberg, but I'm, A, I don't make the decision. B, I don't know because I'm not an engineer or anything in between, and I'm not any smarter than any one of you guys sitting on here when it comes to dredging of a lake. So, um, I, I'm not gonna go crazy into this detail right now, but I have sent you guys an estimate. I have been on the phone for weeks on end, um, hours on end, we'll say it that way, with multiple people. And, you know, uh, uh, again, Tony, to, to, in light of what you're saying, I go full circle. You know, oh, it's, it's not, you know, as soon as we get to where are we gonna dump it? It goes radio silent because they can't find anywhere that will take it. They have tried a couple of farmers, but because of the way that, um, the soil is, it will harden or whatever. So again, they're not willing to take it. It's muck. It has been, you know, had we done this ten years ago, there was probably somewhere that would have taken, taken the fifty-fifty. Now it's like seventy-five percent just mush. Um, I'm using my own numbers on that, but that is the issue. It will not harden. It's not usable for most people. It's not usable for us to take over to, over by the pool. Um, you know, why are we using Westerville's dirt? Why don't we use our own muck? Because it's muck. Um, it's, there's, it's no good for us, and it's no good for them either. So we, we do continue to go in full circle. If anybody can reach out and find somewhere else to dump it, I can tell you, I've talked to Swaco. I've ta, I, I've talked, I promise you, I've already talked to him. Um, I don't know if people have any interest in getting two or three people, and I'm not talking about ten people on a lake committee, but two or three people that want to be on a lake committee that really wanna focus on trying to find somewhere to dump this, trying to get options to bring to council. Um, and I'm talking about, you know, maybe three people that are extremely, have the time to sit and do all of this. Um, not saying that's a good idea, bad idea. I know that there's been people that has wanted a lake committee. Um, I'm not interested in a five, ten-person lake committee that's, you know, wants to talk about everything. I mean, ultimately, the first place is trying to find, in my opinion, getting somewhere to dump it is, is an issue. What's that?
That's the problem in a nutshell.
That's the problem in a nutshell. Now, all of that being said, uh, this is where I'm gonna end this cuz we're gonna get off of here in three minutes. Ultimately, this project's gonna have to go out to bid, um, because it's over fifty thousand dollars. Do we have someone put together the bid documents? Put it out to bid, see what we get, see if somebody else has a recommendation? At this point, I have no idea. I'm talking in a circle. Um, Tony, we've always talked in a circle. Everybody keeps going into a circle. Finding a great place, uh, it's, so then I go to this, finding a great place to dump it and somebody that can excavate it and all of that really doesn't do us any good until we put it out to bid anyways. And if we don't get any bids, then obviously we can move forward. But if we do, maybe we actually find something good. Um, I don't know that anybody would bid on it, but I can't just, I, I don't have bid documents. I don't have anything to do. So do we pay Mike Flickinger or somebody to put together some bid documents, put this out to bid? You know, get some engineering involved, get all of that kind of stuff and move forward. We've also talked about, and I'm just, I want a full meeting of this. We have talked about grant options. We have a grant writer. We did not move forward with a grant writer because he wanted five thousand dollars to research grants. We had talked about, you know, finding a different type of grant writer, and that never came to full circle. Um, so this is where we are today. Today, we are in the same part that we were at twelve months ago. We are no further than we were, other than cleaning out some debris and some trees. We have.
Not, not necessarily true. We do have a solid bid.
We do. Okay.
High, but I mean, at some point, I'm not so sure that we're not gonna just have to say, yes, we always knew it's gonna cost half a million dollars to clean up.
Um, that's the small lake. That's not both lakes.
Yeah, I know. I said the North Lake, half a million dollars to clean up the North Lake.
Right.
Uh, that's sort of what, in my mind, I've been thinking for the past, even before I was directly involved, I was like, oh, that's a, you know, four hundred million or four hundred thousand dollar project, million, geez, a thousand dollar project. That's, that's gonna be spent on that, or it's not gonna get done.
Uh, again, I think this is something that we need to take up in the next community committee meeting, and I guarantee you, we'll be talking about it. But, you know, if we're talking about spending that kind of money, no one has ever said, hey, Mr. Farmer, we'll pay you fifty thousand dollars to dump this stuff. You know, or whatever it is. I don't think anybody's had that conversation. It's just like, hey, you know, so. That's the direct, we gotta find somebody that will take this dirt, take this muck. And if it requires, I know a guy that lives, I mean, he's out in West, Jeff's got some property. If I told him, hey, we'll pay you twenty-five thousand dollars to dump this much crap in your property, I bet he'd say, yeah, bring it on.
My brother would take it for twenty-five grand. I promise you that. He lives in Morango, so.
We need to start talking about.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, but you still have to, you still have to dump it. You still have to get dump trucks and, and move it out there and do all of that. So, you know.
Farmer would have to get a permit from the state.
Well.
The county to do that.
It depends on what county you're talking about.
Uh, that's what I would agree with that too, but I don't know if moving it out of Franklin County, you're gonna have to. But depending on where you dump it, yeah, Moreau, I, I would be surprised if Moreau County had any rules and restrictions. Then you can go put a trailer out in the middle of nowhere and you're.
I got my.
So again, I, okay, we're now two minutes before ten, so I'm done talking about this, um, for tonight. Except for, I know we're not probably gonna be able to talk about it the eighteenth, but on the eighteenth, um, maybe we can set several different specific meetings for this conversation, um, and how we wanna proceed in the next month. I mean, that's, that's kind of where we're at. Uh, and, and Mark, thank you for at least giving me, giving props for the fact that we at least have a bid. So, you know, I, I just, I wanna feel like we're really moving forward. And, and I'm gonna tell you, I don't feel like we're really moving forward because we have a bid that we can't pay for. We don't, we haven't moved forward on grants. We haven't moved. So, yes, we've gotten somewhere. Yes, we know worst-case scenario, I guess. That would be a great way to look at it. Um, yes, we could take that and probably put some bid documents out and get it, you know, get it advertised cuz there's a lot of good information in there. Uh, maybe not, but that's something that I really wanna go in depth and really wanna, I really want to focus on that. I feel like the community building is going in one direction right now. I feel like we, we have a good, um, we're at least rolling in that direction, and I feel like the lake is still just something we've got to sit down, put our feet into and do it.
So by the way, did you ever get your carpeting?
Yes, and it's beautiful. Right now, we're waiting for, well, I'm, okay, let's rephrase that. Uh, it was seven hundred and fifty-two dollars for both rooms. So it can't be that beautiful, but it is usable. Um, and it was, you know, nobody's gonna spend a thousand, two thousand dollars on, on pretty plush carpet. No, it is the cheapest commercial grade, whatever you can buy. Um, and just for the record, I, you know, I'm not sure how this, this building thing's gonna go, but that back bunk room, and Tony, I may have sent you pictures to this. Um, the floor is completely busted up. Like, there's, there's sections that have a good one and a half, two inches of like unlevel, and it goes straight down. I mean, the foundation in that building is not great.
Well, it's, it's an old, it, it, there's a drain in that room, and they sloped the floor back to a drain. I mean, it's.
Yeah. So, but it, it works. Now we're waiting for KGT, um, to come in and set up the computers and do different things before we can start relocating people and figuring out exactly only what we want to do. So as soon as KGT, KGT comes out and gets all that stuff done, then we'll start moving things around. But code enforcement, all of that stuff is definitely getting moved from upstairs into that very back room. And then what we do with the front room, um, is to be determined exactly who's gonna move into that. So we have options.
Okay, and with that being said, are we ready to?
Yes.
Call it a day?
Bye.
All right, everyone have a great day.
Have a good one, everyone.
Have a good one, everyone.